I am calling to order the meeting of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee, school committee meeting number 1,672. Today is September 12th, 2024, and we're at 6:07 PM. So I want to start off by saying, this is going to be a long meeting, but hopefully a very efficient one. But I wanted to warn you, that's why I brought sustenance. Help yourself as we go. The first thing is the approval of school committee minutes. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Second.
Okay. All right, that was Carl with a second and Nancy with a motion. Any edits, comments? Okay, seeing none, we can vote. Carl?
Oh, yes.
Stephanie?
Oh, I'm staying.
Okay, Jim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that's unanimously approved minutes. Enrollment.
Stephanie? Stephanie, sorry, Stephanie.
Right. So it's all recorded? Except, yeah. Okay. All right. Enrollment, Beth?
Enrollment's on 2B. For September 1st, we had 614 students.
Okay.
October 1st is the one that we want to be looking at.
Carl?
I have just a quick question. I don't recall. Was the number for September 1st of last year, 624? That's my recollection.
I'd love to tell you that I have, my photographic memory is right there today, but it's not. So, but it was higher.
A little bit higher.
A little bit higher. Yeah.
And the follow-up to that question, is it mainly because there's, there was a decline in enrollment at the South Agarmont School with pre-K students?
No. It was, it was actually, I think we were, we were talking about it originally, we've had quite a few families who completely moved out of state, and I want to say, we brought in a lot of people to the district, but we have lost just as many families. It's kind of that.
Okay, thank you.
And it's all over the board.
And what Beth had told you, they actually could afford nothing in terms of housing.
Well, the way work is.
That's why, that's why many of them just had to leave to get into a less expensive geographic area. All right. Any other enrollment comments? Seeing none, let's go on to the receiving correspondence.
So in your packet, we just put the correspondence from the MASC. So it's the report of the Resolutions Committee. So when the school committee has time, you can see the outcome of the votes after the resolutions.
Did everybody receive copies of that? Stephanie, you might not have.
Yeah, it's in the packet. It was in the packet.
Oh, okay. But I'm saying in terms of your email and stuff, you hadn't directly received from the MASC?
No.
Okay. All right. Additional correspondence. I actually have two things. One, I received an email with a picture from Mary McGurn. The juncture of Route 41 and Route 23 is now George McGurn Memorial Highway. And there were too many cars behind me today to take another picture, but I will share that. Mary shared it yesterday, and it was, it happened obviously very quickly. It was the help of Smitty and Paul Mark that got it through the legislature. And there it is. So that was nice. The other is a letter I received, and unfortunately did not have time to print it out. So I'm going to have to read it from here, and hopefully we'll quickly find it again. From Jane Burke. And unfortunately, I was, I'm sorry to be doing it this way, but I just got here. You could sing and dance or something in the interim.
Can we ask Charles?
Oh, that's a good idea.
330 kids, what? Elementary, pre-k, five. Were we talking about enrollment? I can't hear.
No, we can't hear you, Bob. Or they can't hear you.
Who can't hear?
Charles.
We can't.
Oh, okay.
Oh, really?
But you can. So what was the question?
You want me to sing and dance?
I don't know who you're talking to.
How you doing?
Carl, of all times, I'll ask your indulgence that what we do is move ahead and then come back to this, if that's okay with everyone, when I can find it. Because clearly, we need to make that happen. Student representative report. Is that Michaela Carpenter?
Yep.
Come on up.
I'm currently a senior, and I was last year's junior student representative. I'm planning on running for this position again this year. Student council elections have not taken place yet, and the high school is planning on meeting next week to kick off the process. The students have time to campaign before we hold our annual elections, and then middle school will follow probably the week after, once high school's complete. In other school news, last Friday, we all wore our student-made and student-designed t-shirts and took a big school fixture, which is always super fun. I know that the senior class is going to be selling butter bread at some point, so if you're looking for anything to buy, you know who to go to. Our high school athletic seasons have begun, and it has been nice to see so many students and staff members supporting the teams. Personally, my senior year has started off great. I thought I would share one class that I'm currently taking, which is home design construction studio. We have been discussing our options for possibly building workforce housing on campus. I'm super excited to see where this class takes us. I will be in it for both semesters and hope that next year's classes keep building off of my class's foundation. I'm excited for what this year will bring, and I hope to be back to up to you guys all in a couple weeks.
Any questions for Michaela?
Yeah.
Who was the teacher of that class?
Mr. Hamel.
My question is, does everyone understand why our interest is in workforce housing as opposed to affordable housing?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we all talked about the differences between it and the class, and we're very excited about it.
Great. We're really excited. It's wonderful you did this initiative. Maybe we have to change one of the articles or add an article. Yes, Art?
I don't exactly remember the year, but when I was working with Curtis von Ruden Harringtons was, we had brought that subject up about workforce housing on this campus. They were, at that time, they were a big part of the conversation, so they should be a big part of the conversation again.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're working on, that's our next step, is getting in touch with all different architects and designers to figure out our next steps, so.
Wonderful. That's great. How many students are in that class?
I think I know there's about 10 of us.
Great. Thank you very much. That's really nice.
That's great.
All right. Any other questions for Michaela? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So this is the letter I received from Jane Burke. I have to read it because correspondence from the public. Dear Miss Silveres and Mr. Vataki.
Can you be a little louder, Bunny?
Dear Miss Silveres and Mr. Vataki, no one ever asked me to speak louder. At the meeting on September 12th, the school committee members will be voting on the 2324 superintendent evaluation. This is one of the most important aspects of the role of the members, especially you two as its leaders who guide them. Parenthetical phrase. I hope the process has gone well, although many members are new to the complexities of the goal-setting and subsequent review of the success in meeting them. As I look back on the evolution of Dr. Regal Budo's leadership over the seven years she has served SBRSD, I am gratified to see that she has been true to her belief in a growth mindset and the value she has placed on the evaluation process for herself, the leadership team, and the teachers. She has listened to the committee's recommendations regarding communication, addressing the needs of all students, and providing structure to the district. She has instituted the newsletter, weekly news and notes, the Eagle Eye, community forums, built the early college high school with Bard College at Simon's Rock, won the opportunity to work with Transcend to bring forth student and community voice in decision-making, and put SBRSD on the national stage by participating in the boards of many associations. All while managing to put forth budgets to fund this work that the communities have supported. Her comment in this week's News and Notes this week reflects her view of leadership. While recognizing that change can be difficult and often requires patience and perseverance, embracing it as a natural outcome of learning empowers our students to view challenges as opportunities for growth rather than obstacles. We try to nurture a mindset that celebrates continuous improvement and adaptability and to create an environment where learning becomes a journey of personal evolution. As we support each other in this mission, we not only inspire our children to reach their greatest potential, but also lead by example, showing that the pursuit of knowledge can be a lifelong adventure of change and self-discovery. It is my hope that the school committee will recognize her for the amazing accomplishments she has made on behalf of our district and support her efforts in the coming year. We will be lucky if she continues to lead SBRSD and further build on the relationship she has built locally and nationally. Thank you too for your many years of service to the district. I know well how much time, effort, and caring it takes to lead the school committee. Warm regards, Jane S. Burke.
That's lovely. That's really lovely.
Yes, it really is. And since we don't comment on correspondence or anything, I will just acknowledge Jane and let her know it was read in case, because she can't get CTSB where she lives. All right. Let's, do we have a student spotlight?
We do, Mr. Miller.
Are you going to sing, dance, or do a spotlight?
I'm going to introduce some studio boys, but before I do, I just want to, and before Michaela walks out, I just want to acknowledge something because I'm so impressed. I've watched her over the years, she was one of my first sixth-grade class students. And one thing we talked about was how important public speaking is. And just seeing you get up here and hearing Jane's letter about leading by example, well, the late MIT professor Patrick Winston said that your success in life will be determined by three things in this order: your ability to speak, your ability to write, and the quality of your ideas. So I just wanted to say, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
And now, some public speaking from our younger students, just to intro the video a little bit. A week ago tomorrow, Carl?
Yes.
Carl, you with us? Last Friday, we celebrated reading, right? Great teachers are raconteurs, they're great storytellers. As the New York Times bestselling author Neil Gaiman said when asked about why we teach fairy tales, and we do teach fairy tales in elementary, he said that fairy tales are more than true. They're true not because we have to teach that a dragon exists, but that dragons are beatable. So here we are, students talking about their favorite books. Enjoy.
My name's Alana, and I brought Russian River because I thought it was an interesting book. Alana, second grade.
My name is Bailey, and I'm in fourth grade. I brought this book, But No Elephants.
And what do you like about this book?
My dad also likes it, so I like it. And it's also very old, it's lost its back cover page. And I'm in fifth grade, and I got this mermaid.
All right. And what do you like about this book?
Because I got a necklace.
Oh, wow, with mermaids? Great. And is today a special day? Why is it special?
Because it's my birthday.
Happy birthday.
My name is Boogie, and I'm in fourth grade, and I brought scribble stones.
All right. And what do you like about scribble stones?
Because it's funny.
My name is Christina, and I'm in third grade. This book is scary as hell.
Hi, my name is Zoe, and I'm in second grade. I brought Sophie Mouse because it's really cool and really funny.
Hi, my name is Eve, and I'm in fifth grade. I'm almost done with this book called The Secret School, and what I like about it is because not all schools have a 14-year-old teacher.
Hi, my name is Emily, and I'm in fourth grade. I brought the North American Field Book to watch the minerals.
Very, very cool.
I brought it because I love collecting rocks.
Awesome.
Hi, hello, my name is Freya, I'm in fifth grade, and I chose Astro Nuts.
My name is Gabby, I'm in fourth grade, and I brought the book because it's very funny and I love the author.
Hi, my name is Hannah, and I'm in first grade. I got these clues, what?
What are they?
And these, it's good night.
Okay.
And this one is in Spanish, but where is Babe?
Hi, my name is Jasmine, and I'm in fourth grade, and I'm going, and I was going to share The Wild and the Wild. It's a really good book, and I'm not going to give any spoilers.
My name is Jay, I'm in fifth grade, and I'm reading A Boy Called Bad, and I'd give it an eight out of 10.
My name is Twan, I'm fourth grade, and my favorite book is Fuzzy because everybody makes fun of her hair, but it's actually really cool.
Hi, I'm Lila, and I'm in grade second.
Welcome to the issue.
And I chose, chose YouTube for having them.
I'm Margaret, and I'm in first grade, and I brought this book about Lily.
My name is Marley, I'm in grade four, and the book I brought is The Wild, where Rock Escapes. It's the second book of The Wild and the Wild.
How does it get off the island?
Well, no spoilers, but I will tell you this, it is on a different island, and it's in a facility.
My name is Ivo, I'm in fourth grade, and I brought horsey Jackson and the Aquabean which are like me.
My name is Amira, and I'm in fifth grade, and I brought this book, No Drake.
Alex, this is our favorite card book.
Hi, my name is Freya, and I'm in first grade, and I like this book because it's an acapella that can turn into a lion.
Oh, supernatural. And why do you like this book?
Because a starfish gets stopped up in the air like you.
Awesome, and there are explosions.
My name is Scott, I'm in fifth grade, and I chose the book Unplugged because like not everyone needs technology to live.
My name is Stella, and I'm in second grade.
And what books did you bring today?
I brought Diary of a One Beaker.
My name is Theo, and I'm in second grade. My books are biodiversity of desert and biodiversity of temperate forests. I like them because everything is real.
My name is Winnie, I'm in third grade, and my favorite book is The House in the Big Woods. I like this book because it has three kids and two parents, and they live in a wild.
Hello, my name is Riley, and I'm in first grade.
And what book did you bring today? The 512 Ants on Sullivan Street. Now tell me why you chose this book.
Because the wise prince fought against Satan.
So that was, that was for, we were recognizing and celebrating National Read a Book Day, and that was initiative that I can't take credit for, that our school librarian Kathleen Keeler started, and we were all wearing our t-shirts as we do the first Friday back to school. We spent the afternoon outside, spread out over all of our campuses at South Agarmont, New Marlboro, and Undermountain, reading. And the children got to choose the books that they wanted to bring, and any children that didn't have books, Kathleen did a great job of making sure that we provided some. Thanks.
That's great.
Oh, and my book, my security blanket.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miller?
Questions?
What's your security book?
Bertrand Russell's Skeptical Essays. It's not a light read. Nineteen twenty.
And a subversive one, isn't it?
Somewhat.
How do they, how do the kids, elementary school kids, they range from first grade through fifth, right? I don't think there was a sixth.
In this video, kindergarten through fifth, yeah.
Kindergarten, okay.
Yeah. So three and four years old to 10.
Are they given a suggested list of books for which to choose?
So it depends on reading for pleasure and reading for the curriculum, so both. So in this instance, they entirely pick these on their own. So every kid, this wasn't, this is what you should read or what you should bring. However, we have an inter-reading curriculum, and then we have books that are age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate. And the teachers have classroom libraries, and then we also have, obviously, our school libraries.
And so the teachers are important in determining what is age-appropriate for first grade or third grade or fifth grade? No?
Yes, and they're also, you know, relationships, right, are the bedrock of good learning. And they get to know the kids and their specific interests, and then they can guide them towards books that they might like. Like our friend Theo there, he was actually reading books about mega geology and so on because that's the kind of stuff he likes, you know, and so teachers can help bring that out, and then spark new passion and interest as well. But yes, you know, occasionally you'll have a kid in second grade grabbing Homer's Odyssey in the original, and then, you know, we're going to try to get him an adaptation. He might really be into certain stories, but there might be something more appropriate.
Are you going to tell us about the new initiative?
There's a lot of new initiatives.
One related to a major publishing company?
Oh, so the United States of Readers. Yes, so in continuing choice and voice with students, don't quote me on the exact date, but in the coming weeks, every student pre-K through fifth grade will receive a catalog from which they'll get to choose two books. This will happen four other times this year, so they'll get a total of 10 books. The teachers will have the opportunity to add 25 books to their classroom libraries. And so that's the United States of Readers Reading Program. And then secondly, you will all have the opportunity to join our guest reader initiative. Our first day will be the week of October 12th or October 13th.
Fifteen.
And that's also that, we coordinated that, so it's our first book fair week as well. And one thing I'm asking that's new this year from our last guest reader initiative, since you asked, is that when you come in to read, I'm also asking you to bring your favorite children's book and talk about why this book was formative and what you loved about it growing up and becoming a reader.
And just to add, the, none of the children are, they're being gifted this?
Yeah, the books are completely free. There's no prices. I mean, worth you all supporting it.
Right.
However, yes, there's no cost to families. That was an important aspect about the equity of the program.
And I saw you walking out with your first haul last week.
Oh, yes. Yeah. I'm a hoarder of books, that's for sure.
Carl?
Who, oh, I'm sorry, have you not finished?
No, no, no.
Who are eligible, who are the people who are eligible to the guest readers?
So community members, administration, school committee members.
And what's the process whereby we get to be listed as who wants to do it?
You send me an email and say, I'm interested in being a guest reader. We'll assign you a class, and then the teacher will be your point of contact from that point on.
And finally, a children's book that was instrumental or important to us in growing up should be a book that's appropriate for the students that were reading to.
Yes and no, it depends. There's nuance. For example, there could be a book that's not age-appropriate, but it's one that they could aspire to as they get older, and you could just talk about how this story turned you into a reader, or this comic book really got you excited about whatever it was. Don't limit yourself.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank your students.
Yes.
Our students. Public comment, please, come on up.
Don't use this for my three minutes, it's Murray Canins, because I have a lot to say and I have to say it fast. I'm here to speak as a two-year member of the school council.
You have to identify yourself while you're up at this.
Oh, Murray Canins.
Okay, town?
Current, Santisfield. That's not what I'm here about.
Right.
Okay. Now can I go?
Absolutely.
I'm here to speak as a two-year member of the school council to address items in the 2324 handbook that were not followed. The handbook was on the school council agenda for our March 2024 meeting to provide input, but we never see a final copy. My comments are based on facts, not rumors, and based on my personal experience with a freshman student that I was the custodial guardian of that took place during the year. My comments should not be viewed as negativity, but as an opinion, that if the handbook is not followed, the sections that are not followed should be revised or deleted. Discipline standards and procedures, special ed and 504 students. A student can unilaterally be removed for up to 45 days per for possession or use of illegal drugs on school premises. When my student admitted to using THC was on a 504 plan, this did not happen. Discipline protocols. Consequences may be used to hold students accountable for inappropriate actions at school, repair or replace damaged or defaced property. I have a video of a student damaging a ceiling tile in the bathroom. Was that student made accountable? Memorandum of understanding. The SBRSD and SPD agree to develop and coordinate their response to violent or criminal acts by students, including possession or use of drugs that occur on school premises. The SPD was not notified when my student was found with edibles. Do we attempt to find out where the vapes, drugs, and drug paraphernalia are coming from and what is done? Law violations. Students deserve an expectation of safety in school. Violations of school rules, which are also violations of the law, will involve notification of the police. This was not done with my student when she was found with a vape or edibles. Class cuts. An incident report will be recorded and a detention will be issued for each class. The teacher will make a call to the student's home. My student never received a detention, nor did I ever receive a call from the teacher. Standards and procedures that warrant discipline of students. I had a video of a student assaulting another student in the bathroom and told it was handled. I took it to the SPD and was told it was definitely an assault. My student and others gave a statement to the SPD, and the student was arrested and sent to juvenile court. The school did not bring it to the attention of SPD. Use of vaping materials and sanctions for this policy violation. Too long to read, but I can assure you that my student was never fined for the offense, and it was inside the school building. Use sale of possession of a controlled substance. Again, too long to read, and I can assure you that SPD was never notified when my student was found to be in possession of marijuana edibles. Although I was very proactive and had my student in therapy and had her attend an intensive outpatient substance abuse and mental health program, she repeated her behavior of substance abuse, admitting that there were no meaningful consequences at school, just mine at home. The student is currently attending her sophomore year at an alternate high school in Connecticut, until the student... Until the students are held accountable and have meaningful consequences for their behavior, as outlined in the handbook, nothing will ever change. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? All right. Business managers' report.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Um, I'm here to ask for approval of the warrants regarding the lender warrant for meal tax, general supplies, transportation, spend expenses, and pre-service along with the payroll.
I don't think so, there's one.
Okay. Any questions, comment? Okay. Seeing none, um, we'll take a vote, we'll start at the other end, Kyle.
Yes.
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 Kim?
Yes.
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 And yes, okay. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. And, uh, business with district member towns. Do we have?
No.
Okay. All right. Chairman's report. So a couple of things. One, thank you to those people who came, um, and chimed me at the Sheffield Fair at various points. It was good to be able to talk to people informally and it was interesting to see the people who did come and spoke, the, the one thing that more than anything else came out was the high regard that people in the community have for the early college program. And not that we would have throngs of people, but the preponderance of those who did come, were really pleased with that program. We had one father-daughter where she's coming, uh, she's going to be coming here next year, so I said, please make sure you get your shadowing day, you know, for high school and she's leaving private school. The other thing that is a question that I have, um, the Sheffield Cultural Council and our other towns' cultural council has money that's available for, for cultural council-related activities that take place in our school. The schools, there was a misinterpretation and I don't remember how, I don't know how it happened or anything, where people thought SVRSD could only put in one grant application. That is not true. If anybody, and I'm, I'm also, you know, saying it for you, Charles, for Jesse, for, um, if anybody has an idea of a special program or an enhancement or something related to music or theater or any of the arts, um, where you know that there are teachers who could, you know, get a boost for a few hundred dollars, um, the period of application is now open and it's through the middle of October. I, this, Charles and Jesse, I'll leave to you. I said, if you did have people and you wanted somebody to do a walkthrough on how to apply for a grant, I'll do it. It doesn't negate my being on the cultural council. And it would also be good for those of you towns other than Sheffield, find out, like last year, Egremont said that they would work with Sheffield's cultural council. So if you, if you, all you have to do in your application is say, and you put the identical application in, um, to another of our five towns. So please, if you know of things, of students interested in doing something or teachers, let's encourage it. It's, it's something where you can get the support of the towns. Also, um, if, I would ask Charles and Jesse for you to tell me whether you think you have people where it warrants, like, doing a training on how to submit, um, for a grant from the cultural council. At the same time, the Eagle Fund grants are running, so a lot of it, you know, you could say that you applied for an Eagle Fund grant as a way to, um, enhance what you need for the cultural council. But this is the time and I would love to see more than, you know, one or two grants and we'd love if there is a student initiative, you know, that would be wonderful to encourage. All right? And, um, basically, those are the highlights. Not going to drag it on, I mean, not drag it on, not going to add to it everything. All right, Beth, let me turn to you.
Did you give a date?
No, I did not.
That the cultural grant, or do you?
Um, it's the, I think it's the 19th of October, but I'll send out the date.
That'd be helpful. Because I have the formal announcement on the Eagle Fund here. Um, okay, so, um, I have a couple of things I want to share with you at this point in the meeting and some I'll share later with our initiatives. So the Leading Now Group, which is the, um, group that I participated in that is, uh, the national group on, um, dealing with the political climate in, uh, the nation and helping support superintendents and school committees navigate those challenges or opportunities, as we like to say. Um, they have come up with, um, at partially some of my request and other people who were in my cohort, a superintendent and school committee initiative, which is a two-day opportunity. It's a superintendent-school board retreat. It's really a day and a half. Um, a two-day opportunity for superintendents and their board chair and/or vice chair and/or another, two, two members of the school committee, um, in Providence, Rhode Island on October 17th and 18th. And, uh, we need to tell them, uh, by, um, I think it's September 20th or whatever, who's going to attend. But we were one of eight communities asked to specifically participate in this national initiative. So I would love for us to, uh, be willing to, um, be part of this inaugural group and, uh, do the work. So I will leave that up to the committee to make the decision as to, um, who, um, who would go. But I think it would be, uh, you know, a really nice opportunity to, to take part in. So there's that.
Um, if anyone, I already said to Beth I would go. Um, so if anybody is interested in attending, please just send me an email.
Okay.
Is that, what, do you know what days those are?
Thursday and Friday.
It's a Thursday and Friday, yeah. I think it starts at noon on the 17th and, um, goes through, um, the Friday.
And the day before is when we have our, which I didn't mention Kennedy's forum, but I think it's on your list.
It's on my list. But, yeah. Okay. Um, also, so we had the first, um, uh, MARS meeting, uh, I always feel like I'm going to Mars, but I'm on the Board of Directors of the Mass Association of Regional Schools. We had our first meeting of the year. Uh, we talked about this important advocacy opportunity and then it was blasted all over the place today. So I will forward to the committee if you didn't get it, but it's called Project 211 and it's uniting to raise awareness of financial challenges faced by districts and hold harmless status. So, um, our communities are one of the hold harmless districts, which is why we usually receive the minimum per pupil, um, contribution. There's a lot of, uh, talk, we wanted to, we put forth an initiative to look at the Chapter 70 funding formula and it was not passed, that was left out of any, um, legislation. So one of the things that I believe Senator Lewis is, um, is a key person that they've been trying to work on, um, funding and what his comment to, um, superintendents and, um, the people like MARS is that, uh, we need to hear from the individual towns because there's not enough of us, right? We're so small. So instead of just my voice or, um, or our school committee voice, they would like to hear from all the board of selectmen in each town, all of the finance committee members in each town. So they're really advocating, they're hoping to get, you know, thousands of people on, um, this Zoom meeting. So it is, believe it or not, on October 8th, which was also the same night following, immediately following the community session for, uh, transcend, it will be a Zoom meeting on October 8th at 6:30. So I will forward this Project 211. You can click on the link and sign up to go and listen to this and, um, and talk about advocating on behalf of what some districts are saying, they're not even going to make it until FY27 based on, um, their current funding formula. So it's very serious for regionals and rurals, um, so I, I hope that people will consider at least getting on and listening to, um, what everybody is talking about with our legislative, um, members. So we have two task force that, uh, are happening. One to talk about cell phone usage and maybe, um, eventually recommending a policy to the school committee. That, um, group is meeting, um, October 1st, 5:30? Yes, 5:30, yes, they're nine, okay. Um, and more details will follow with locations, et cetera, but I want to just get that out there. Um, the attendance of, uh, task force, improving attendance is, uh, September 26th at 4:30. So if anybody would like to join, um, any of those, uh, those will be starting up. The candidate forum for those who are, uh, running for school committee is going to be on, I believe it's a Wednesday night, October 16th at 7:00 PM in the Tac Pack. Um, we will have students who will be facilitating, uh, that, that evening, but hopefully it's, uh, an opportunity for, uh, our communities to put faces with, um, names so they know what they're, what and whom they're voting for when they go to the polls.
What was the time again?
7:00 PM. We wanted to make sure people got back from games and family time so that they could participate.
I'd just like to, please, if you don't, add to that, a lot of this push for doing the forums, to meeting candidates and people on the school committee, really came from the town clerks. After the last election, I, our town, Sheffield's town clerk spoke to me and Phil, she said, you know, I hope you're not going to be upset, but I said, no, any knowledge is appreciated. That she heard from the other town clerks and also experienced herself where people say, I don't know who anybody is with the school committee. I said, well, you know, that we didn't have competitive, she said, they want to know who's on their school committee. So though this is really, you know, to let people know, the people who are up for election and any write-ins, et cetera, I'm going to push again that we each have, Kim's giving me the look, that we each have an under-one-page bio so that we could then put it on our website, we could share it then and people know who we are. And, um, this is really something the communities are asking for. So please, I will give you a date, I will send you mine, since I had to write it for something else and then you can, either, please respond to that and everything. Thank you, Beth.
And the last thing I had was, uh, just a reminder that the, um, staff and community members, the, the message came out or a notice came out to apply for the Eagle Fund or Janet's Fund grant. The application deadline is October 15th. Uh, and so, uh, you had mentioned maybe doing, um, a, a session to, uh, help people if they wanted more information, but, uh, there is on, there's a flyer, which we've probably included in our news and notes and if not, we will, um, going forward. Uh, but you can get more information or apply, um, at Berkshire Chaconic, there's a whole, a whole website address. So we'll make sure that everybody has that and can get their ideas together and, and, and participate in that. So that's what I have for now.
Great, thank you very much. Julie?
Hello, um, I just wanted to highlight a couple of positive things. The first one is, uh, that the preliminary report card data from the state has come out and so far, uh, we, so the state gives us target numbers for like MCAS and attendance, excuse me, and so far, in almost all areas, we have exceeded the target that was set for us. So at the end of last year, our results on MCAS and our overall attendance data showed substantial growth and even more growth than they had set as our goal. So that is a wonderful thing. And once they put out the, uh, final report card, of course, we'll share the details with you. And then the last thing that I wanted to make sure that we all celebrated is that next week, Dr. Regabuto is going to be going to the Association of School Superintendent's Conference and at that conference, she is going to be honored for her nomination for the 2024 Excellence in a Small School District Leadership Award. So we have much to be proud of in our little small district.
Wow.
Slightly embarrassing, but thank you very much for that.
No, well deserved.
Appreciate it.
Well, it's important that people know that you are being recognized nationally for your hard work.
Thank you.
That's wonderful.
And that's it?
Thank you. And with that, let's move on to Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify the attendance, could you just clarify what you mean by improvement in attendance? Is that related to the MCAS participation?
No.
Okay, can you just clarify?
Yes, so I will clarify. So as you know, there has been a huge national concern about student attendance at schools post-pandemic. And so that is a huge part of how the state evaluates districts. And so they are looking for an increase, like they're not looking for a miracle, but they're looking for growth. And so the target that they set for us to, um, increase percentage-wise of students attending school on a regular basis, not being in the high-risk area, we exceeded. So we are doing a really good job trying to get our kids back into school. And we have had our greatest success, success at the elementary level, not surprising, but we have definitely had success at secondary as well. Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, no, I, I just have a brief, actually a comment, not a question for Julie.
Sure.
I looked at those statistics over, over the years and haven't, hasn't this, this, this district always done well in terms of absenteeism and, and a high percentage of school attendance?
We, we do better than, like, the national average, yeah. Correct. Thank goodness it's not my answer.
So thank you for clarifying that because I just wanted to dovetail off of that and what Beth had mentioned about the improving attendance task force.
Oh.
Yes, because, um, that is something we want to take a closer look at. There are still pockets that we're concerned about, um, as far as some of our students and their ability to attend on a regular basis. So we want to look at that more closely and maybe come up with some ideas. So please, if you know people in the community, families, um, please encourage them. There's going to be a general, um, invite going out, but please encourage them to attend that on September 26th at 4:30 here in the Eagles lot. to attend that on September 26th at 4:30 here in the Eagles lot. I just wanted to mention, you know, all the students are back to school. Pre-K started last week. Everybody is doing so well. I had some conversations with the pre-K teachers this week, and everybody seems to be really happy and enjoying their entry into school. So I just wanted to comment on that. And I get to talk about COVID and my Health Services Act. So good news. I'm just sharing all of this with you. There are 17 mobile clinics that are going to be held in South County through the Southern Berkshire Public Health Collaborative. They're coming up starting on September 28th, and they're going through November. In your package, you're going to see the schedule, so you can take a look at this. And they're offering flu, COVID, and other vaccines. And they're even doing scheduling home visits for those that can't get out and get to clinics. So I would invite you to share this. It's going out from the Southern Berkshire Public Health Collaborative too, but this is really important. And we are conducting one here at Mount Everett on October 16th from 3:00 to 6:00 PM in the Mount Everett Cafeteria. They're also hosting one in Marlborough, Monterey. There are, I think, there are maybe the town halls or firehouses. I can't remember. It's on your list there, though. So just keep your eyes on that. Our COVID cases are out there. However, we're following the Department of Public Health recommendations, treating it like all respiratory illnesses, but there is enough particular cases, so keep that in mind. And other than that, I just wanted to thank you all for your continued support of our programs. Our students are really entering in with feeling supported, and that's been commented on by various people. I was talking to Dr. Hoff today, and he was just filling me on a couple of situations that he had reached out to families, and they were feeling so supported here. So that's because of your support of our program. So thank you very much.
Thank you for saying that.
A quick question. Last year, when they did one of the Mount Everett Cafeteria,
they were giving both the COVID and the flu.
Yes.
Will they be doing that again?
Yes, they will be.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Sandy?
If you'd like to just make a quick comment as a recommendation on the shots, if a person does get both shots in the clinic for the flu and for the COVID, through experience, my recommendation is get one in each arm. Because many health providers will say, this is not, get both in the same arm. But for me, my own piece of mind, I want to know if I'm going to get a reaction to one, which one I get a reaction to. So just as a personal recommendation, if you're going to get both, I recommend getting one in each arm.
All right.
Thank you.
New business. So we have picked out a retreat date. This will be this way after the elections. And Beth, do you want to speak to it because you think some people who you think will lead us?
Well, I think possibly depending on this retreat, leading now might come out and do a more personalized portion of it, but there's a lot of ideas that could go into that day. We just need to confirm it so we can plan.
And at the same time of confirming, I would love it if there would be maybe two or three people who would be willing to work on planning that date and, you know, saying yes or no to whatever the consultants say.
Or whatever things we're throwing at you as ideas.
Right, exactly. Exactly. And also getting a sense of what people want. Okay. So any prob, anybody willing to make a motion to approve that date?
So moved.
So moved. We have a second on that?
Second.
That's all right. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, let's start, I'll start with Art.
Yes.
Oh, which way are you going that way?
I'm going this way, then come back to to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Approve.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Carl?
Oh, I'm not used to Stephanie's voice yet. Yes.
Okay, Kyle?
Abstain.
And Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. So we, what?
I mean, yes.
Oh, not me, yes. So we had.
Three abstentions.
Three abstentions and five, no, oh, let's, raise your hand if you said yes. I wasn't counting. One, two, three, four, okay, seven. All right. Thank you very much. It's approved. Anyone at this point like to say they're willing to volunteer to work on planning this?
I'd be happy to, but there's no guarantee that I'm still going to have a seat at that point. So it feels like maybe not the right choice.
Well, we'll say.
But I'm happy to help.
Yeah, one way or another.
I guess, yeah.
All right. So Stephanie, anybody else saying yes?
I will eventually. I just can't.
Okay. Well, it wouldn't be right though. Okay. So we have Nancy, Stephanie, me, and we'll see what happens election time. All right. We'll keep you updated. All right. Moving on. Academic calendar changes. Beth, would you like to?
Yeah. So at the beginning, when we lay out the plan for the, for the year, we look at the MCAS schedule as they laid out, but then they say that's a, we're guessing. And so sometimes they make some adjustments. We happen to have planned for a half-day professional development day on May 21st, and there is going to be an exam on that day. So we can't have a half-day on exam day. So we would like to propose to just move it to May 20th instead of the 21st. And we like to do this sooner rather than later so that families can plan. That's why we.
Okay. Someone make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second there from Carl. Let's vote on that change. Carl?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Did you say Kyle or Carl?
Carl.
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Done. Okay. All right. This took us quite a while, but we have the superintendent's evaluation. Do you have the royal copies?
Yeah, they should be submitted.
Oh, okay. So this actually has to be read aloud once there's a motion so that the public can hear it. Just so that you know, the process, we had a vote that was done online anonymously, and the comments were asked for, we, as you remember, Stephanie has agreed to, assuming she's here with us, tackle the use of this tool. So we're better off the next time around. The issue was if you put in a comment, it very often dropped your evaluation. So if you look at the report. Just want to make sure. We have all of it. Okay. What I did is I took what Jim had done as head of the Evaluation Committee, and this is a good time for me to also note, Jim has asked, he wants to stay on the Evaluation, Executive Evaluation Subcommittee, but he's asked to step down as chair, having a number of re-personal reasons for that. I asked Kim if she would take on the job of chairing that committee, and she has agreed to do that. So what we, we met as a subcommittee, do you want to explain what we did last week?
We met as a subcommittee and reviewed what Jim had written so far. And because of the functions of the current way the program's set up to send out the survey to the various board members, it wasn't cohesive enough to get the correct data or have the comments aligned with the ratings. So we tackled that problem. We put them back into context and put together this report.
And the suggestions from the committee were to take the comments and to integrate them with the various areas. So I agreed to do that. And we also, I've noted it in here, because Beth received nothing less than a proficient on anything, it didn't make any sense to list the two lower categories. So the reason you see only scores on proficient and exemplary are because those are the only, you know, ratings, nothing went below that. You'll see totals in some cases that are nine, in some cases, seven. There wasn't any way to retrieve some of the information where it got knocked out in Survey Monkey. Okay. So I will take a motion, well, I will read the evaluation, which I have to do. Superintendent's evaluation, 2023-24 school year. Based on evaluations provided by individual members of the school committee compared with the collective goals of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District and the goals of Dr. Beth Rigobuto, Superintendent of SBRSD, the Executive Evaluation Subcommittee recommends to the full school committee that Dr. Rigobuto should receive an exemplary evaluation for the 2023-2024 academic year. During a particularly difficult year, Dr. Rigobuto has moved the district to a point where new initiatives are producing positive results for our students beyond those originally anticipated. As one school committee member noted in their evaluation, quote, "The leadership team has consistently shown that they will take the steps needed to improve the quality of education and student outcomes," close quote. Dr. Rigobuto has taken the school committee's desire for her to increase community engagement to a new level, and this was noted by school committee members in their evaluations. As stated in one evaluation, quote, "There have been many opportunities for district stakeholders to participate and receive feedback. I believe that the superintendent and administration worked hard to ensure that families and the community at large are included as partners in the school district," close quote. She and her administrative team ensure that there are at least weekly newsletters going out to all families with easy links to forums, flyers, community events, athletic and cultural happenings, and ways to receive assistance from resources within the district. She not only holds periodic conversations with the superintendent, open to all community members, both in person and via Zoom, but she also now hosts a superintendent's roundtable aimed at bringing together select board members and finance committee members from all five district towns to discuss issues ranging from the annual budget to cell phones and attendance. Through the efforts of the superintendent and her team, SBRSD is now recognized as a leader in innovation, not only in Berkshire County and throughout the state, but on the national level. As a result of one competitive grant process, Mount Everett was designated as one of four high schools in the Commonwealth, Commonwealth to become a wall-to-wall early college with Bard College at Simon's Rock. After only two years of implementation, several students in the class of 2024 graduated with as many as 30 transferable college credits free of charge. She has worked with the staff to get teachers certified to teach college courses on our campus as students continue to study on the Simon's Rock campus. Students are learning that the best way to succeed in college is to go to college, and that is what our early college is proving. In addition, Dr. Rigobuto led the way with her administrative team in seeking and receiving a competitive grant from Transcend, a nonprofit organization designed to bring together leaders of outstanding rural schools in order to share ways to reach educational goals and implement innovative programs when you may be isolated from the larger educational nerve centers of the community. This is another quote, "The superintendent and administration seem to be constantly working towards the improvement of educational quality across the district and for all learners," close quote, noted a school committee member in their evaluation. Additionally, while leading our district, Beth earned her doctorate, has been elected to the Board and Directors of MARS, Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, and NESDEC, New England School Development Council. As a business administrator, is an active member of MASMO, Massachusetts Association of School Business Officers, has given presentations at a number of professional organizations, including AASA, MASSS, MASMO, and MASCE. She is now recognized throughout the state for her innovative leadership skills. Dr. Rigobuto is a member of AASA's National Advanced Rural Education Cohort, and was asked this past year to present at the National Conference on Education with colleagues from Transcend, and is poised to do so again this coming year in a session titled Career Connected Innovation in Rural America: Redesigning for Student Success in the 21st Century. Within our district, she has made it a point to encourage staff members with skills to share those skills, take on leadership roles, and enhance their careers. Commented one school committee member on this very point, quote, "I have found Dr. Rigobuto to be a steadfast, hardworking, and committed individual. She has assembled a highly qualified and impressive group of teachers and staff," close quote. The school committee has felt particularly fortunate that Dr. Rigobuto has certification and degree enabling her to serve as a district business administrator. Not only is she able to ensure the accuracy of any school finance data, but she also absolutely takes pride in making every dollar count in our district. We have also had a major advantage in applying for grants as Beth is able to take an active role in producing necessary financial documents. She has used her financial acumen to manage the business side of our early college partnership with Simon's Rock. Most importantly, her business skills have enabled us over the past seven years to average a 2.78 increase in our annual budget, thus helping all five towns to continue to support the district. The latest budget, despite cost increases beyond the district's control, called for a 2.9% increase. The budget passed in all five towns as most taxpayers, as well as the finance and select boards of our towns, recognize that we have one of the lowest increases in assessments to our towns of any district in Berkshire County. This year, Dr. Rigobuto accepted the Donald D. Johnson Operational and Cost Efficiency Award from MASMO on behalf of SBRSD. She is currently a finalist for the 2024 National Association of School Superintendents Award for Excellence in Small District Leadership. That's what you're getting next week. You won.
I didn't win. I am a finalist.
You're a finalist. Most importantly, Beth and her administrative team have empowered our students to reach beyond what they may believe they can do. Noted one school committee member in their evaluation, quote, "It has been my personal experience that the administration and staff are very attuned to each student's needs and work to provide the educational, social, and emotional support that they need on an individual and group level," close quote. Dr. Rigobuto established the superintendent's advisory councils at the different levels, and thanks to these groups, we now have a completely redesigned secondary school library and new elementary playground, changes in the dining menu, and an upgraded track is on its way. Our track and field team double, is double what it had been in the past. She always has her door open for students. She always has her door open for students, and they come into her office regularly to tell her what is going on in their lives and school. They are not there just for candy. With the help of our dedicated staff leaders and members, we had a wonderful math night for students and their families and demand for more. Our students took a major leadership role in campaigning to keep Mount Everett and to not merge with our neighbors to the north. They were phenomenal in how they stood up and spoke before various communities and wrote letters on behalf of our district. Beth maintained throughout the almost three years of debate on merger, her professional position, but our students led the way for their district. In conclusion, the school committee members commented, this school committee members commented, sums up a major part of the working roles of SBRSD superintendent, quote, "Dr. Rigobuto and the administration continue to strive to make SBRSD a better and inclusive school district that will improve the lives of all of our students and community at large." And the following is just, the following of the major predefined goals of the superintendent for the past academic year. Each year, the superintendent and school committee work together to establish goals that guide the work of the superintendent and her leadership team and serve as the basis for evaluation. Since Dr. Rigobuto did not receive any evaluation on any goal below proficient, the two lower grades are not listed. Though there are 10 members of the SBRSD school committee, a glitch in the use of Survey Monkey led to several incomplete reports. This mostly happened when someone left a comment in addition to the evaluation grade. The comments somehow wiped out the grade. The highest total for any goal was nine evaluators and the lowest seven. Goal one, review and evaluate existing strategies for continuous improvement and consistent strategies that effectively meet the needs of diverse learners. Exemplary six, proficient three. Goal two, review and evaluate existing strategies for continuous improvement with a focus on assessment practices, data collection, equitable and inclusive practices, and integration across disciplines. Exemplary eight, that was it, no proficient. Goal three, review, evaluate, and develop comprehensive protocols to ensure a safe, effective, welcoming, and inclusive environment for all learners. Exemplary four, proficient four. Support, goal four, support the implementation of job embedded professional development, opportunities for growth, distributive leadership, and retention of educators and administrators. Exemplary four, proficient three. Goal five, actively promote and support inclusive practices that encourage the active participation of families and community members. Exemplary five, proficient three. Goal six, address the whole child's needs, including academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs. Exemplary five, proficient three. Goal seven, develop and cultivate a culture of best practices to improve student outcomes. Exemplary four, proficient four. Goal eight, development of a shared educational vision. Exemplary six, proficient two. Goal nine, continue to develop skills in professional practice and successful management of the district. Exemplary eight, proficient one. The end. So at this point, what we must do is approve the recommendation made by the subcommittee, the Executive Evaluation Subcommittee, that Dr. Rigobuto be given an exemplary evaluation. And it would, and this is, this evaluation report is what is released to the public.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a so moved here and a so moved there. So we have, okay. Any comments, discussion, et cetera, Carl?
Yeah. This motion is simply, and maybe simply is unnecessary, but this is a motion to, for the school committee to
Accept this report.
Accept the report and to say that, and to approve of the exemplary recommendation.
Right, in the first paragraph, it says that the Subcommittee recommends that Dr. Rigobuto should receive an exemplary evaluation for the 2023-24 academic year.
But we are, we, the school committee by its vote is doing more than that. They're saying, one, we approve the recommendation of an exemplary
Right.
Rating, and two, we accept this report for
Exactly.
For being released
Exactly.
To the school committee, to the public.
School community, yes, exactly. Thank you for the clarification. Any further questions, comments?
I would recommend that we, on the second page, first paragraph, third sentence down, in seeking a, receiving a, should be changed to in seeking and receiving a.
I know, I said and
You corrected that, I just before it gets
Yeah, there are three things I picked up as I read, so I will make the, thank you. I love having you edit. Okay, all right, so with the edits, there are two others, like, similar. Any other comments, et cetera? So let's start with Art.
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes, all right? So that is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, yeses, one abstention. Thank you all very much, thank you. And with the corrections, the final one, you'll be able to go out. All right, now we have our little lateral movement. Do you want to explain it? You know what it is? So, the people who are involved.
Well, the lateral movement is part of the normal process, or the process, I should say, that's part of the contract when a faculty or staff member has met the requirements by taking their coursework or whatever is necessary to move them from one column to another, meaning if they have had a master's and they've taken 30 credits, then they would move to another column, there's a process by which they originally have that, whatever coursework they're going to take approved, then they have to receive a certain grade as opposed on those courses, and then that whole process is reviewed by the central office staff and put in front of the school committee for approval. So we have a list of those people who have met those requirements and gone through that process appropriately and are here for the school committee to vote to approve their that.
Move to, oh, I'm sorry, did I interrupt somebody?
You didn't.
I did, I'm sorry. Well, I move to approve the second.
All right, just one other thing to add to it. In budgeting, this is taken into consideration, so it's not as if, you know, we have to go hunting for money. It, Beth's team incurs what they assume will be a certain number of lateral movement increases. And the other thing that Beth has done over the years, when she first came on, there were people submitting for credit, for movement, less than truly professional coursework. And Beth established a standard, or several standards, so the faculty knows if you are aiming for professional development, this is what's acceptable in our district. All right, yes?
Yeah, just as, having been on the other side of this process, when you're hired on, when you sign your contract as a faculty member, what this is, is an encouragement to improve your professional abilities and status, and so these 10 people took the steps necessary to improve from, to at least master's level.
Well, and doctor.
And one doctor.
And one doctor, yeah.
And one doctor.
Okay.
And M60 is a master's plus 60, by the way. M18, and nine, as you say. So, some people spent considerable amount of time in college doing this stuff.
While teaching.
While working for
While teaching, right, full time.
Okay, any, thank you, Jim, for that. Any others? All right, so we have a motion to approve, and Kim will start with you.
Sure. Yes.
Yes.
I was so excited.
Yes.
It's coming out of his pocket. All right, David? It said yes, Jim?
I said yes.
Also yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then we go Art?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes, okay. All right. Thank you, on behalf of those people, thank you as well. All right, and now we come to the student and families handbook. I assume that you
They were sent to the school committee.
Yes, yes. So I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And we have a second?
Second.
That was a second, Kyle?
Yes.
Okay, so that was motion and a second discussion. Kim?
So, after actually reading it, which is probably something I've never done in all my years, there's a lot of things that I, which our previous speaker had mentioned that I can't follow through with, that I have a problem agreeing and passing something when we don't do what it says. And if we're not doing what it says, it shouldn't be in there. If we are doing what they said, no problem, but I have, I have an issue with that. You're asking students, parents, staff, everybody to agree that this handbook is the rules, but that's not. So the discipline one is the one I have the hugest issue, because lack of discipline for other people, other students, actually affects my children. You know, their comfortability level, things they're exposed to, and I have a serious issue with that.
Other comments there, Carl?
Well, two things to what Kim just said. You have rules because the administration of this school district believes that you need rules, including rules of discipline. You have two choices. If you, you can say, "We won't have any rules because they're not being enforced, and we have no evidence, other than apocryphal evidence that we heard earlier in this meeting, of an individual who has no idea as to the extent that rules are enforced or not enforced." In her individual case, again, an apocryphal and unsupported by any real evidence, the speaker said that the rules are not being followed. Well, we don't know that. We have no evidence as to the disciplinary workings, because the school committee doesn't have any control of this, the school committee is not involved in any discipline. So if you don't approve the handbook, that's saying we have no disciplinary rules. We don't approve it, and so we have no student handbook. You can approve the whole thing, and you can say, we don't, I mean, I don't think we're given the option of not approving, or, I mean, of having an option other than approving or disapproving. I think if each committee member voted, "I approve this and not approve that," we end up with an unapproved handbook. I think, and I have done this in the past, have made recommendations regarding certain parts of the handbook, some of which were listened to and adopted, and some of which weren't, and that was fine. So I think, I don't know how we should go forward in the future, but I think one of the things that could be done is that we be given the proposed handbook well in advance, further in advance of when it was done for this meeting, so that, and be allowed to make comments, obviously not to be circulated
Right.
Among the members, because that would involve an open meeting law problem, but allow us to make suggestions that are meaningful and to alert the administration, and I'm sure it's a group effort of sorts in preparing this, so that we can have a meaningful discussion on what we like, what we don't like. But I think failing to approve it leaves us in a desert in terms of having guidelines for students, and much of it doesn't involve discipline. I mean, much of it involves things completely divorced from discipline. So, I mean, that's my point, it's my view on whether or not we should approve the handbook. I also, as Kim does, and maybe others do, have issues with some of the things in there. And I think all of us, I don't know, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I will, which is not unusual for me, but I think that we probably all have something in that handbook that we don't like or don't think is what it should be. But we're in a difficult place in, if we don't approve it. So even though I have similar reluctance, as Kim does, to some aspects of it, I think we have little choice, and that's, here we are. And I think, I mean, we could adjourn, I don't know if we can, Beth knows the answer to that, we could adjourn approval, the school year has just started, the handbook is supposed to have been in effect for a couple of weeks, I mean, that the students are operating under
Well, they're operating under the last one.
Under the last one, yeah. So, in any event, I took too much time, but that's, that's, those are my thoughts on
And any others, Kyle?
I mean, I can't speak to any particular instances, but I would assume that the handbook, any rules or punishments that are supposed to occur after violation of the handbook, there is discretion involved, I would assume, right? You, you know, and there's discretion, like, going outside the school, in any law, you know, if you break the law in the real world, there's discretion that prosecutors have, that police have, so, I mean, I would think we should just take that into account, right?
David?
Well, I agree with the, with the counsel's assessment that we, like, all have concerns about the contents of the handbook. I also agree that a failure to approve it is not productive. I do think that there, we should, if the enforcement is inadequate and we have not received any evidence of that as such, we should have an opportunity for citizens to present evidence if it exists. And if we're going to consider, since the administration has near sole control over this, we should be considering that as a part of the superintendent's evaluation, since the superintendent is the person responsible for all actions of the administration.
Anyone else comment?
I have comments, but they seem much less important at this point. I've gone through the whole thing up until page 45. I sent Michelle a list of small formatting, punctuation, changes that I'd like to see made to make this professional and something that we can all be really proud of and stand behind. The one thing that varies from that is on page 31, I think there's a typo under safety and emergency. I didn't feel comfortable sending that to her and not discussing it with the group. Again, it's small. There's a statement that says on the There's a statement that says, "On these days, schools will start between two hours later." I believe that should be probably between one and two hours later, or something else between two hours later.
It's a two hour delay.
It starts between two hours later. It just, it doesn't, it's a confusing statement. And actually, I've read it as a parent before and said, "I have no idea what that means," but okay, I'll sign it.
I see what you're saying. Two hours.
I would like to suggest, I mean, both Mr. Miller and Mr. Carpenter here.
I don't know. Go ahead, what are you gonna say?
That, I think, going to what Carl said, my belief is, you know, we have to, I believe in approving it. I also believe that there are issues in the discipline area where I think we would be better off being better educated about and having our questions answered. So, I'm thinking maybe what we should have, if Mr. Miller and Mr. Carpenter are willing, is to have, add to our task forces and look at the issue of discipline and enforcement because in some ways, it does become difficult for a parent who says, "Well, I signed this, this is what it's supposed to be, but how come this isn't happening?" So, I don't know if that's something, you know, right now, I think it should be approved. My view is it should be approved, but at the same time, I do think, given the concerns, that maybe we need a little bit of more education about how it's carried out.
Well, we're not, certainly not going to disclose any confidential information.
Of course not.
I'm going to assure you that we use district council when we do discipline. We, all of this, all, everything that's been in this handbook has been approved by council. But the reality of life is that there are nuances, and there are things that may or may not be correct. There are things that people assume have happened or haven't happened. But the only people who know that are the people who are doing the actual reporting. So, you know, I think this is an incredibly challenging and ton of work for administration. And they take this home with them all the time. I mean, this is, this is, it's a lot for any administrator. And I think you'll see that even when they were talking about legislation around some of the latest rules and regulations that we are charged with enforcing, and the reality of doing that and the actual support of, you know, unfunded mandates and actual ability to do so in a school district on some of these things. So, I think there's a lot more to it, and I think, sure, we should, we could talk about it in a wider advocacy piece. And, but as far as specific incidences, and I think it's unfair and inappropriate to make the assumption that things weren't done.
I'm not.
I'm just saying, but that there were comments. So I'm just gonna say, on behalf of my administrative team. So, I think that's where we should go. But I think the fact that these rules haven't strayed much, the only updates that have been made, this handbook hasn't changed, other than legal required updates that are here. So, it's the handbook that's been out there, it's the handbook we're operating with these new rules, if that makes it easier to, at least approve before we move forward.
I, what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't want to discuss any one child, any one incident. That's exactly what you said. But I think we can be better advocates if we have a better understanding in general. I'm not, I wouldn't say specifics, but just in general. Like, in other words, how many people understand the guidelines for least restrictive environment? How many people understand what you can and cannot do in a case of a child having a five oh four, or something else? We would be better educated, I think, if we, you know, learned more.
Okay.
And I'm, and in no way am I saying you should divulge anything from any.
Well, we won't, but.
Right, we wouldn't, any individual. But we could be better advocates and say, "This was followed. This is the procedure." Because, yeah, I think we would be better off as a better educated school committee if we had more understanding. Yes, Carl?
Hopefully, very quickly, two comment, a comment and a suggestion. The comment is, what Kyle said earlier is very important. That there is always something, in criminal law, it's known as prosecutorial discretion. We know the posted speed limit, for example, the posted speed limit on the Massachusetts Turnpike is sixty-five miles an hour. You are never, almost never ticketed for going sixty-seven miles an hour, or sixty-nine miles an hour. But there is a point at which state troopers will ticket you. Now, because I defend some of these cases, and in New York, I happen to know where those, but I'm not gonna reveal it this time, that would be a dangerous thing to do. Oh, Carl told me I could go sixty-nine miles, or seventy-four miles. The next thing, and my suggestion is this, perhaps, and I know this is not gonna be popular with the rest of the school committee, we could create another subcommittee that would be tasked with reviewing the handbook when it's first made available, and reporting either in writing or orally to the school committee on what they see as problematic, if anything, what they see as problematic to it. And I know that people would not believe to be on another subcommittee, but it's my suggestion that it might not be a bad idea, and it would save this kind of discussion in the future.
So, I understand discretion. But when it comes to the comfortability level of all students, I mean, we have to consider all students, not just a few. And if a few affects all, there's something that needs to be done. And that is my concern, because it's not being done.
Okay.
And it might be discretion.
I think if, do you like Carl's suggestion?
I do.
As a way for us, because then we can look it through if we say that the major area in the whole handbook is the discipline area. And then, we meet with our principals, our superintendent, and say, "These are things that we have an issue with," whatever. Explain to us so we could be better advocates for our handbook. So, Carl, are you making a motion that we have an ad hoc subcommittee?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Uh, David.
Oh.
Is there a motion already?
I think they've.
This is, this is, we'll get to the full motion. He, if we're going to have a way to look at resolving this, if we do the subcommittee.
I move that we create a school committee, subcommittee, to address future, meaning twenty-five onward handbook for students and families.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
I have a second.
Well, I'm gonna get to you in a second. We have a second on that.
I have a second.
Okay, David?
We have not taken a vote on the prior motion. We, if I, we should finish that first, before we.
It may enable us to get a vote on the other, if this addresses the concerns that people have.
I have one more comment on the.
Yes.
Motion we were actually talking about. If the citizen has actual, you know, evidence of their concerns, maybe we should, to ensure the privacy of students, convene a, an executive session where that individual can present information to us.
That is, that's the role of the administration. That is not our role. That's the superintendent and her team. Okay, do we have any more comment on? All right, I'll take a vote on Carl's motion. Carl?
Well, I have no choice, do I?
Okay, Stephanie?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
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 Okay, so, we will be convening this ad hoc committee in order to examine, and we don't have to wait until the end there. Anybody wanna be on this committee?
Oh.
Okay.
I'll be out of the call.
Okay.
You and me.
Jim, Carl, no, Kim.
Yeah, we shouldn't have an odd number, it just helps in general.
We are.
Okay.
I'll bring a snare.
All right.
Be odd in that sense.
Okay, with that taken care of, let's go back to the main motion, which is.
I'd like to be on that committee also.
Yes, okay, all right. All right, main motion to approve the handbook. All right, I'm gonna start, Kyle?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
And a yes here, so that's eight to two, it's approved. Okay. All right, candidate forum. It's, Beth has already explained, on the sixteenth, we will be having a forum inviting the community to come and meet our candidates. I'm gonna wait for Stephanie to have to explain her particulars, because I've been explaining that ninety times.
Do you want me to explain now? Or?
I walked, when I walked in here.
You want me to explain it there?
You may be faced with explaining it there.
No problem, I've gotten very good at it.
Yeah, excellent. All right, update on the district initiatives.
Sure, so. So, for early college, I wanted to share that Simon's Rock will be hosting an early college conference on the twentieth of September. We have a few of our students who are participating in the program who will be on a panel. We have staff members who are attending, and Julie Dolan is gonna attend on behalf of the administration that day. You know, Simon's Rock is taking the lead by hosting this, and additional advocacy for early college programming, because it has shown, obviously, some very promising results across the state. And so, they are, they are taking the lead by hosting this session. We also have, we are in the process of training five new staff members to be early college certified, so we'll have.
Oh, wow.
Ten, I think, by the end of this year. We have done an expansion of our college experience class. It is a four-part series that juniors and seniors are participating in, and it's an emphasis on skill building. So, whether or not you are actually going to continue on into a college scenario past K-12, it's about what skills you would still need that are practical and logistical for any post-secondary experiences. So, that's what's happening.
How is that given? Is it given as a separate course?
Yes, it's on, it's, it meets once a week for juniors and seniors.
What's?
One credit. So, as far as innovation pathways, we had received the planning grant for a new pathway, which is clean energy for planning and preparing, to add that to our repertoire. So, we will be submitting the formal application to add a clean energy pathway, and that is due in February and March. It is, oh, so a new pathway at the state level. We are in the process of submitting our self-reflection on our existing pathways, and that is due at the end of September. And we have already reached out to the Mass C E C, which has been the group that is collaborating with DESI to develop this pathway at the state level. For Transend, obviously, we have, I've been mentioning, our first community team meeting this year is on October eighth at five o'clock. But it was really nice when I got home last night, later than I hoped. There was a surprise gift on my porch, and part of the Transend group was for superintendents. We had a cohort of superintendents who supported each other in the rural cohort last year. In the, in the package was a gift of Simon Sinek's Start With Y book, a frame, which was inscripted with a picture of all the superintendents in the cohort I participated in last year, and a handwritten note that said, "Your L C L L, which is the superintendent-level community, is always here for you." So I thought that was really nice. They seem to know right when you need that little pick-me-up. So, that's all I have to report on our other initiatives, so I just sign.
Thank you very much. All right, subcommittee reports. Sarah?
No report.
Nancy?
Oh, she stepped out. She had to use the facility.
Yes, okay, well, we're working on a newsletter. For the first newsletter of the year. Carl? Nothing?
No. Isn't it Liz LaFond who is going to come in here?
Yes, and she hasn't responded to me at all.
Oh, really? So you contacted her, and she hasn't responded?
Four times. So I am now going directly to Glenn.
Okay, but everybody here knows that we are going to have a presentation by Liz LaFond of the M A S C. And until we do, there's really nothing for us to do. So, we're, we're, the policy subcommittee is an enforced hiatus. But Liz is very, has a ton of work, and I understand that.
Thank you. I will, I'm just, you know, at this point, I'll go to Glenn Gutcher. All right, personnel and negotiations, we're getting close. Art?
No, nothing in building grounds.
And superintendent evaluation, we now have, that's Kim. And I think we.
We covered that?
We covered that. All right. And we haven't had a review of executive.
And we need to, but it's not quite ready. Hopefully, hopefully before the end, hopefully before Thanksgiving.
Okay. And you've been doing our wonderful warrants.
I'll sign.
Thank you. And I know, Julie, you were trying to set us up for a curriculum meeting.
Yeah, we set a date.
Yes.
End of September.
Mm-hmm, so we will be doing that. Anything else for M A S C?
We have in our agenda packet a report of the resolutions committee. And someone from this school committee who was attending the conference in November has to, should be, our representative to the resolutions committee. I don't wanna scare people away, but it's an absolutely brutal task. The resolutions subcommittee extended a, what could have been a one-hour meeting to about six hours last year, and I had to sit through it. And by the time when it came for a vote, I had no idea what was going on. I was in some kind of fog. So anybody who's going would like to do that. I'm happy to relinquish my position to you.
No, thank you.
I'll even, I'd even give you my print ticket for one of those evenings.
Maybe, maybe we could split it.
Well, it's.
I think you can only have one.
But I forgot to mention one thing. We will, we will.
I think you can only have one.
And it's gonna be on the agenda before the, before the, before the meeting, which I think starts November second, or, I don't know, but it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but, but we will, we will have to vote on these resolutions that you see in your packet, whether the school committee wants to say yes to them or no to them. Because whoever is the representative to the resolutions committee at the conference will represent our district in the vote.
So we, so we should put this on the agenda? So, we, so we should put this on the agenda?
Yes, for next, for maybe next meeting, or sometime in November, I mean, in October.
All right. Okay, Eagle Fund, well, we know that-
They're accepting applications.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
When is the end date on that?
Beth, you had just announced that Eagle Fund-
The fifteenth, October fifteenth.
October fifteenth. All right, nothing with early childhood or childcare, that's just really busy places with lovely children. Anything new with community health?
There's mobile units going out.
Yeah, there are.
They're getting shots. Thirteen of them.
And one of them's going to the firehouse in Southfield, just to facilitate your march.
Yeah, okay. And regional agreement review subcommittee, I think, once we have a new school committee, we'll be dealing with that, and future agenda items. Anyone have anything? Okay, we will have an executive session.
Wanna go back to this one or are you not doing it?
Oh, I-
We did, we missed it when we did the-
What do you think?
It's up to you.
Thanks.
Well, I mean, I think you'd have to ask the committee if they're willing to entertain this, 'cause it came in five minutes before we came.
Right, see, this, this, I will read it to you and see whether we want it. We didn't have time to, because Beth batted a few minutes, a few, a few minutes before we began. So, Dear SBRSD School Committee and Superintendent Regal Review, I would like to formally request school choice placement for my children, Jacob and Oliver Stati, I don't know how to pronounce them, both age four, at the South Aggron Schoolhouse for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Please understand the timing of this request is due to the unforeseen closure of their previous school in late August. I have specifically been hoping for a small, high-end school for them and feel that they would be a great fit for SBRSD and the South Aggron School in particular. As all four-year-olds, they are eager to become part of a school community and to take their first steps put into the world. So, Beth just received that, we don't have additional information.
They do have to request because it's pre-K, so that is up to the, those who manage.
Is there room? South Aggron, the students who realize-
Sorry, what's the question?
Is there room for these two four-year-olds at South Aggron?
There is. We haven't thoroughly reviewed their packets, yeah. Yes, are we making a-
So, can we make a motion?
So, then, do you wanna wait, or do you want to, what are you saying?
I would rather not wait.
Can we make a motion?
Well, I, I, let's make a motion and then let's hear from the professionals on it. Yes.
Can I make a motion of accepting those two students after reviewing their packets?
Yes.
You go ahead, do that.
Is there a second on that?
My question.
Kyle?
Second.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion with a second, and with that on the floor, I think we'd like to hear from the professionals regarding-
I know that they've re- reviewed the packet, that's why I-
Yeah.
So.
I don't think we realized it was going to be on the docket tonight, but we discussed the fact that there's space. We just have a preview of their packets, which just came in.
Okay.
We just wanna make sure that-
Yeah, we just got it, so they wanna jump the gun.
Right.
Okay, David?
Since they have, since the administration has not had the appropriate opportunity to fully renew the submission, I recommend we table this to the next meeting so they can present the, make sure it's appropriate.
The, the problem with tabling it that, and delays in the fact that they have no school at the moment to go to. So, if they review the packet and everything's cohesive, they can enter immediately versus being out of school and not having any kind of education.
For another month.
For another month, so.
So, I'd like to, I'd like to turn to Mr. Miller and Ms. Albert to address that.
It's just about placement. We wanna make sure that they be appropriately placed.
Appropriately placed.
Not that we would-
And we wouldn't do that without thoroughly reviewing, and we certainly wouldn't move ahead, even if you did agree to accept them, without ensuring that we have the registration.
So, can we approve with the conditions of an acceptable review?
We don't, just a question, sorry, we don't decide placement, the school committee is inside placement for the students anyway, so we're just accepting them from out of district.
Right, if they meet the requirements.
If they meet the requirements.
With the space being currently open at South Aggron.
Yeah.
Okay, so therefore, the motion is really to accept these students pending review of the admission packet.
Registration.
Yes, registration packet. Carl?
Yeah, finally, that's what I was, I was gonna suggest, an amendment of the, of the motion to, the school committee can approve it, subject to the approval of, I guess it's Sandy and Charles, right, or anybody else involved here.
Ultimately, you-
So, will whoever made that motion accept my amendment?
I thought I made a motion to accept the students pending the review of their packets.
Is that what it was?
Are we changing something there?
No, no, I didn't hear the last part.
Okay, all right. David, you wanted to say something, or that addressed it?
I think that addressed it.
Great, okay, so let's take a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and fine, okay. I know you're absolutely going to-
Just a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
How many children are in South Aggron?
There's nine currently.
There's usually around eleven.
There's nine, and we try to cap at twelve.
Okay.
We find twelve would be, that's all we're, great.
Yep.
Okay, with that, we actually do have an executive session. It wasn't written out here, so if you'll indulge me, I will read. Motion to enter into executive session pursuant to MGLC thirty A, paragraph twenty-one, A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with superintendent or contract negotiations with superintendent, and not to return to open session.
Second.
Okay, I, can you make it that it was your motion? No, nobody has this yet, so moved, and we have a second, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, and, okay.
Don't we need to do one more thing? Move to adjournment?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, I move to adjournment.
All right.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Yes, all right. Would-